Okay, we are live.
Thank you. I'd like to call the meeting to order at 6:03 PM. Mrs. DeCarlo, may please have a roll call?
Yes, Mrs. Brooks.
Here.
Mrs. Quinalaro.
Here.
Mrs. Mezic.
Here.
Mrs. Shields.
Here.
Mrs. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Thomasini.
I'm back.
Mr. Talbor.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you very much. The New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act was passed to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice and attend meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interest is discussed and acted upon. In accordance with the provision of the act, the Rockaway Township Board of Education has caused notice of the date, time, and place of said meetings to be published in the Daily Record, Star Ledger, and posted in all schools in the Rockaway Township School District as well as on the Rockaway Township District website. Does any board member wish to object to the conduct of this meeting for the purpose as stated in the public notice? May I please have a motion to waive the flag? I hear Aaron.
Second.
And Mrs. Shields. Raise your hands. Thank you. Can I please have a motion to go into closed session?
So moved. Second.
Please let it be noted at 6:05 PM. Okay, we will now move to closed session. Thank you.
Hello, I just want to remind everyone that we're still live.
Just a reminder to everyone, we're still live.
Is there still only one person in the waiting room?
That's correct. There's only one person waiting to speak.
Mr. Adams?
That's correct.
Thank you.
And just a reminder, we're still live.
Okay, thank you. One, two, three, five, six, waiting for a reason. I have a motion to adjourn closed session.
移到了 Back end.
And closed session will be closed. And closed session will be closed at 7:33. Have a show of hands? Thank you. And we're going to reconvene open at 7:33. We are live and everyone has joined us. Good evening, everyone. Can I please have everyone stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? Mike, you might want to change the screen.
Sorry.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance. To, I pledge allegiance. I can't hear anybody else. United States of America.
And to the Republic.
Public. Which stands.
And.
One nation.
Nation.
Under God.
Indivisible.
With.
With liberty.
And justice. For all. Welcome, everyone. We have a presentation today. That regarding service and tenure pin awards. And before we start that, I would just like to say. That. It, this is very fitting to end 2020 with Northeastern since we've had such ups and downs. Through this, this course of the year, and it's quite fitting that tomorrow that's going to arrive. And in March, when we started this with the pandemic, I reached out specifically to the community to say, thank you in advance for your support. Knowing that we were going to have some troubled waters ahead of us, ups and downs. And I really want to just reiterate that again. Because with the close of the year, I'm hoping for a more boring 2021. But I really do appreciate. The support from the community. It means the world to our staff and administration, teachers, nurses, custodians, every, from the top down. This has been a real ride and. Your patience and. It with us and understanding is very great, very appreciated. Okay? And with that, we will start our presentation to honor. Some of our, some of our teachers and staff and Dr. Dr. T. Are you ready to start talking about that?
I am. Thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. And per President Hobart's comments, pre-pandemic times traditionally in our district. The December board meeting was always a celebration. And we still want to carry that spirit forward tonight, even though we are virtual. We do want to not only celebrate the service and the tenure awards I'm about to share with the community. But also make a commitment. This pandemic will end. And when this pandemic ends, we will celebrate in person and we will celebrate loudly and with joy. But until we can do that appropriately, I do want to, at the very least, acknowledge by name. Those this evening for their service awards and for their tenure pins. And let me begin with the service awards. And at the top of the list is a woman who was the first employee. Who I had the privilege of meeting on my very first day of employment in Rockaway Township School District. And we're honoring her tonight for her 35 years of service to the Birchwood School Community. Wow. Pat Zelinski, thank you. I hope you're watching. If you're out there, we applaud you. I must say, my very first impression of Rockaway Township was your smile on that very first day. And it continues to inspire me. So Pat, thank you for the legacy that you've built within our community. Your years of service and devotion to our students and our staff. It's simply amazing. And we honor you tonight in words and we hope to honor you in the near future in person. I'll go down the list further with some other, with similarly amazing accomplishments. The next is for 30 years. David Bishop, we miss you. Joseph Catalon from Copeland Middle School and Jacqueline Moffett, also from Copeland Middle School. Thank you for your 30 years of service. Next category is 25 years of service. We honor tonight Maria Casteline, Andrea Di Filippo. Nancy Doherty, Shawna Leszek, Mary Ann Lauren, Lynn Smith, Catherine T. and Judy Wallen. Thank you all very much for your 25 years of service to our community, our students and our teachers. The next category is our 20-year service awards. And I'm pleased to say that this is a long list, which speaks to really the legacy and commitment of our teachers and staff to our community. I'll begin with Judith Aaron from Dwyer, Catherine Bucelli from Copeland, Kristen Chappy from Copeland. Geraldine Collins from Copeland, Paulina, Paulina Chrysler, apologize, Paulina, Paulina Chrysler from DBO. Sonal Davay from Birchwood, Ruth Foster from the Transportation Department, Christopher Jackson from Copeland. Kirby Jacobson from Stony Brook, Jennifer Clack from Copeland, Gina Loder from Stony Brook. Cherylene Paradies from Stony Brook, Susan Ranfett from Dwyer, Ellen Schmidt from Birchwood. Lynn Shunner from KDM, Millie Talbot from Central Office, Susan Van Gelder from Copeland. Tara Van Orton from Dwyer and Joseph Verdino, a bus driver. To all of those I just recognized 20 years of service to our community. We very much appreciate and value all of your years of service. Thank you so much. Next, I'm going to move to the tenure pins that would have been awarded in person tonight, but will be awarded in person in the future at some point. I vouch to that. First, let me begin with two administrators. Our Principal Alfonso Gennella of Copeland and Stacy Wisnewski, we honor you with tenure pins tonight. Congratulations and thank you. We look forward to your long service in our community. From the Birchwood School Community, a tenure pin to Scott Norland. Thank you. And then we acknowledge your accomplishments. The Copeland Middle School Suzanne Barkawi, Erin Boots King and Frances Lattawig. You have earned your tenure pins this year and we congratulate you on that. From the Dennis B. O'Brien Community, Jesse Ezo, your tenure pin would be awarded this evening. We congratulate you as well. From the Catherine D. Malone School Community, Erin Young, fifth grade math teacher, we award you your tenure pin as well tonight virtually. And three teachers from the Stony Brook School Community, Samantha Evans, Mary Claire Halbrook and Allison Yulish. We acknowledge and honor and thank you and are proud to award you your tenure pins and look forward to your long years of service to our community. The next category is our secretarial staff, Joan Hoyt from DBO. Lori McMahon from Copeland and Laura Nichols, a clerk typist at Stony Brook. We acknowledge you with your tenure pins this evening. From our maintenance staff, three individuals to honor Anthony Burrows, Curtis McCall and George Merton. Thank you and we look forward to your long years of service to our community. And from our custodial staff, Louis Garcia, Jesus Castano, David Katz, Jose Cuglaro. Luis Valvales, Danielle Bustelos, Joseph Runions and Nicholas Correa. We acknowledge and note your award and winning of tenure pins this evening as well. Those are all the names and we say them tonight with joy and glee. But also with the expectation that we will see you all in person in the very near future to share these pins with you and your families in a ceremony. And so we thank you. And with that, I'll conclude my virtual presentation for this evening. Again, with a note, we look forward to an in-person one in the very near future. And I'll hand it back to President Hobart.
Thank you very much. I love hearing about the good stuff. Congratulations to all those honored. Next, first on our agenda is our of public session. So I'm going to read. Our announcement during the course of the Board of Education, Board Meeting, the Rockaway Township Board of Education. Offers member of the public an opportunity to address issues regarding operations of Rockaway Township Public Schools. The Board reminds those individuals who take this opportunity to identify themselves by name and address. To limit their comments to items listed on the agenda and or items directly related to the operations of the school district. Issues raised by members of the public may or may not be responded to by the Board. All comments will be considered and a response will be forthcoming if and when appropriate. The Board asks the members of the public to be courteous and mindful of the rights of other individuals when speaking. Specifically, comments regarding students and employees of the Board are discouraged and will not be responded to by the Board. Students and employees have specific legal rights afforded by the laws. The Board bears no responsibility nor, nor will be liable for any comments made by the meeting. Members of the public. Members of the public should consider their comments in light of the legal rights of those affected or identified in the comments. And be aware that they are legally responsible and liable for their comments. With that, may I please have a motion to open to the public?
So moved.
Second. Mr. Thomasini and Mrs. Brooks. Can I have a show of hands, please? Thank you. And I believe that there is one person waiting to speak.
That is correct. I'm admitting him now.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone.
Welcome.
Good evening. I'm Brian Adams, speaking on behalf of co-president Tara Van Orton and the Rockaway Township Education Association. Before we start, we echo the sentiments of Dr. Turnavian and commend the committed RTA members. Recognize for their years of service this evening. This afternoon, the Association submitted a report from Mr. David Newman, an industrial hygienist with the Work Environment Council. Who has made recommendations based on his years of knowledge and reviewing. The district's reopening plan along with the land associate's HVAC assessment. We look forward to the opportunity to meet with representatives from the Board, the District and the Association to discuss these recommendations. To ensure the safest conditions for our students and staff. And finally, given that this is our last board meeting of 2020. We wish everyone a safe and joyous new year. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Adams. Just to confirm that everyone has received this.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay. Welcome. Okay. And just to confirm, there is no one else in the waiting room?
That is correct. No one else.
Okay. Can I please have a motion to close public comment? Second. Show of hands, please. Thank you. Okay. Next, first thing on the agenda is communications. We have. Four listed and we have an additional communication from the RTA that came in this afternoon referencing what he just spoke about. Mrs. DeCarlo, I do not believe that there is anything further. Can you, you're muted.
Sorry about that. It was only the one from Mr. Adams that came in this afternoon.
Right. Okay. Just wanted to confirm. Thank you. Okay. All right. And next on the agenda is we have the minutes for the November 18th. Board meeting. I wasn't at that meeting, but I did watch the video and read the. Read the minutes and I just wanted to, I wanted to add two things to it from watching the video, Mrs. DeCarlo. I had sent over to you and I'll just let the Board know that I just wanted to. At the end where it says Mrs. Smith received a board award, I just wanted to read that she received an award from New Jersey School Boards Association. And in, under the policy committee, just add that Mrs. Smith provided rationale and response to the question regarding Strauss estimate. And that's the only thing I wanted to add in there from what I saw on the video.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Can I please have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Second. Is there any, any further discussion before we take a vote? Okay. Can I please have a roll call?
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mrs. Cortalaru?
Yes.
Mrs. Mezic?
Yes.
Mrs. Shields?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Thomasini?
Yes.
Mrs. Hobart?
I abstain.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Next on, next on our agenda is the superintendent's report. So Dr. T, if you're ready.
Yes, I am. Thank you, President Hobart.
Yeah.
Good evening, Rockaway Township. I hope everyone is doing well. I would like to begin this evening by acknowledging. The news I shared last week about moving our schools to full virtual learning through January 15th was upsetting for some in our community. As I indicated in the notice, I do consider this switch to full virtual learning to be temporary. And I am committed to returning all of our schools to hybrid instruction the week of January 19th. Our entire staff has done an amazing job with the implementation of our hybrid instruction model under very difficult circumstances. I could not be prouder of them all for the commitment and dedication they have shown throughout this school year to our students and families. As we move into the second half of our school year. We are committed to continuing to work in partnership with the community to ensure the safety. Of our students and staff remains our top priority in all we do. Once the conditions of the, of the pandemic improve. We will look to accelerate our reopening plan in an attempt to bring more students back for in-person instruction on a weekly basis. And considering any changes, a priority will be given to our youngest learners. Those in pre-K to second grade. I know this has been hard on everyone. And I want to thank everyone for their continued efforts, support and patience. I have one additional update this evening. I want to highlight on the board agenda. Our includes our school calendar for the 21-22 school year. This calendar includes three significant shifts that I believe will have a positive impact on our school district overall. First, we're moving the new teacher orientation sooner by one week in August. I believe this change will allow us to provide even greater support to our new teachers as they prepare for their first year, for their first school year in our community. Second, we're moving our family conferences so they occur part of the last week of October and the first week of November. Traditionally, they were held the second week of November, which tended to create a very choppy dynamic for the entire month of November. This shift will give us two weeks of uninterrupted full days of instruction before Thanksgiving. And third, we've removed an early dismissal day from January to make sure we're capitalizing and capturing as many instructional minutes as possible. In closing, I know the conditions of the pandemic remain, remain top of mind for everyone. I would like to wish everyone a happy and safe holiday season. Please help us, everyone, keep, keep everyone safe by remaining vigilant with the use of face coverings, face coverings. Keeping good social distance and frequent use of hand sanitizers even through the holiday season. We truly are better together. Thank you. And that concludes my report for this evening.
Nancy, you're on mute.
Yep, just realized it. Thank you. Does anyone have any questions or comments for the superintendent?
Well, I, I just want to say moving the conferences, I think that's very bold and I do admire that and. You know, we're losing so many days last spring this year with everything that's going on and. As much quality time as we can give these kids, it's going to be priceless. So thank you.
Thank you for sharing that. And I would also just add, I didn't put in my comments, but for those that are maybe wondering. The amount of positive feedback we received about the virtual conference experience this year was overwhelming. So. While we don't have a vision for what visual conferences might look like next year, we are committed to integrating that somehow. In a way that might make it even more customer friendly, friendly experience for our families.
Thank you. Okay. If, up next is the business administrator's report.
Good evening, everyone. Tonight, I just have a few brief notes from the business office. This evening, the Board will be approving the initial engineering work for the design of a totally new HVA system for the Dennis B. O'Brien School. After completion of this project, we will be able to tie the DBO HVAC system into the automated building system with our other buildings. We expect this work to begin at the end of this school year. The on-ground portion of our yearly audit is complete. The auditors are now currently finishing up remotely. And hopefully we should have some results from that soon. The additional work at Dennis B. O'Brien on the north side of the building is complete and the remaining punch list items will be completed as the weather permits and that would be resurfacing part of the parking lot. And that's my report for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mrs. DeCarlo. Does anybody have anything for Mrs. DeCarlo? Questions or comments? I had one question, Mrs. DeCarlo. It wasn't addressed in your your report, but I wanted to inquire about the free lunches because I wanted to see how the turnout was, was happening for them in our schools. Do we have a large turnout of people utilizing that service?
Absolutely, Mrs. Hjellborg. Oh, we have a turnout. It's not as large as we would like. So perhaps I could take this opportunity to remind that lunches are being given out on Tuesdays and Thursdays, not tomorrow though, because it was canceled due to the weather at KDM and at Copeland. KDM is from 11 to 12:30 and Copeland is from 11 to 2:30. In addition, we do have a bus that is making rounds and will be stopping at Kendall Court and Swede Mine Road for those residents that would find it more convenient to have their lunch delivered by the bus. Lunches are available to all Rockaway Township students. So it doesn't need any kind of prior approval. Everybody is welcome. And we would like to see everybody turn out for lunches and for the opportunity for our cafeteria staff to, to serve the community.
Thank you so much. I know my husband stopped by to pick up for my son's lunches and I could tell you I was very appreciative of having things that he can grab and very kid-friendly. And he was, he was also, he loved the chocolate milk part of it because I don't let him have too much chocolate milk. So he was so excited about that. I had a parent reach out to me, very grateful. Both of them are working and they really appreciate having this available that they one less thing that they had to worry about for their children. And then I had another parent reach out and saying that they were working out of the home and they were having a hard time like figuring out when to get it. And so I just want to encourage anybody to call them and they will work with you to make, get, get the food to you and your family. And I encourage everyone to take advantage of it. So thank you for, for that, Mrs. DeCarlo.
You're very welcome.
There's nothing else than the curriculum report from Mr. Higgins.
Good evening, members of the board and hello, Rockaway Township. I would like to continue in the same vein as Dr. Ternavian when I say a heartfelt thank you to the entire Rockaway Township School community. From central office to building administration to faculty and staff and to students and families, you have all done a wonderful job of making this situation successful. Since the process of adapting our programs began last March, this community as a whole has rode in the same direction in the best interest of everyone involved. For that and for the continued support we receive from all levels, I am grateful. With our move to virtual learning through the 15th of January, we have made some changes to both our schedules and our guidelines for teachers. Firstly, each building has revamped its schedule to accommodate some key aspects that we view as paramount, paramount to student success in a virtual environment. We've now focused on social and emotional learning for all students in the virtual environment. There is a renewed focus on live teaching through whole class instruction and small group instruction. There's a continued communication between teachers, students, and parents and a balance of instruction and screen time and screen breaks. As we have said throughout the last two years, we are a learning organization and we are committed to a continued study of the best practices within our profession. We've learned much from the work of our teachers and students over the last few months and will continue to do so throughout the next few weeks. Please continue to reach out with questions and concerns and we will do our best to work alongside you. During that upcoming period of virtual learning, our midpoint screening assessments will take place. As a reminder, those assessments consist of a series of reading screenings like Akadience and Fountas and Pinnell and the iReady Math Diagnostic. We will be sending out guidance to families that will stress the importance of these screenings and helping our teachers determine areas of strengths and weaknesses for each students. Since the spring, we have attempted to gather as much information about our students this way as to gauge the amount of learning loss that may have occurred due to the changes in instructional models. Our teachers and administrators have used this data to make crucial decisions about interventions for their students and we feel we are making great strides towards accelerating learning in our schools. Also, a huge thank you to Mandy Thomas and Vanessa Waxman for their facilitation of the fifth grade family night in December that was focused on celebrating Computer Science Week. Aimed at our fifth grade families, the content ranged from, ranged from showing how simple algorithms develop into more complex code. Students and their families created simple codes for each other to perform as they learned about loops, conditionals, and strings. These will be running through the year, throughout the year and for various grade levels. Space is limited, so please stay tuned for the next one, which will be on January 12th and 13th for our fourth grade families. Also, a quick reminder, elementary report cards are available in the parent portal today and they've been available since 4:00 PM. So please don't forget to go and check that, the parent portal. Thank you very much and I wish everyone in the community a very, very happy holiday and a wonderful new year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Higgins. Does anyone have any comments or questions for Mr. Higgins?
I just have a comment. My son and I got to participate in that fifth grade virtual family enrichment night and we had a great time. His favorite part was actually the coding and the scavenger hunt. And I do encourage any families who haven't participated in these yet to give one a try.
Thanks. I'll definitely pass that on to them. They had such a blast. I was able to watch also that night. I had it on in my house just watching everyone participate in it. My kids and my wife were very interested in, in everything that was going on. It was really fun.
Awesome. Cool. Okay. If there are no other questions, then I believe we can move on to committee reports. Anyone like to go first?
Operations has a report.
Thank you.
Um, operations committee met on the second. It was really kind of an audit, if you will, of district properties, discussing the DBO ventilation project. And then just unfortunately, we now have a standard bullet item called COVID. So I'm just a few highlights. We had received a list of properties from the township in reference to what we own from a district standpoint, about 13 pieces of property with five schools, the central office and roughly four lots. Copeland and Stony Brook are on one lot. So we learned a lot of stuff like that. We've also looked at many different ways of future use if necessary. So it was a nice audit and I appreciate Mrs. DeCarlo and the business office's help with all of that. And I hope she got a history lesson on some of the bizarre things in Rockaway. That being said, on page nine, under finance, number four, that is the DBO ventilation project. The committee does recommend that for approval. Hopefully that project can get underway for summer 2021. Last but not least, huge kudos to Mrs. DeCarlo and the business office for getting us a CARES Act grant for roughly $93,800. Awesome job. I love when we get money in. Also, on page nine, there's the finance section, the bills. Myself and Mrs. Shields went to the board office yesterday and signed many, many, many baskets of bills. A lot of them were backordered items due to COVID, Chromebooks, masks. It was just, it was crazy stuff. So just so you know, we also do recommend those for approval. That being said, concludes my report.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Brooks. Any questions for Mrs. Brooks? Okay. If not, um, Mrs. Smith, would you like to do your policy?
Sure. Thank you. So the policy committee met on December 9th from 6:22 to 8:27 at central office. In attendance were Dr. T, Kristi, Aaron, myself. We started off with the policy manual update policies that we were continuing to review. Some of them include revisions to programs, new titles, positions, new plans, procedures. There may be some anticipated purchases. We are waiting on some responses from Strauss estimate. We also decided to add to the manual update, some of the newer policy, policies from the alert 221 that directly related to policies and regulations that were already included. So for example, policy 2431 and regulation 2431 dot one that both deal with athletic competition and emergency procedures were added. In addition, policy 3230 outside activities for teaching staff as the policy 4230 outside activities for support staff, it was already in the manual update. So these were added to help promote some consistency. In addition, bylaw 0164 dot six, which is new regarding remote public board meetings during declared emergency is something that was distributed to the policy committee and also shared with the full board for future policy discussions. As far as recommendations, there are three policies up for second read this evening with any changes that were requested. And then upcoming in January 2021, the policy manual update will be likely on the agenda for the second meeting in January. I would also like to just summarize as we did last year, the state of policy. So the policy committee has made a great deal of progress this year as of today's board meeting, including the three policies up for second read tonight. 24 policies will have been adopted or re-adopted in 2020. During the policy manual review, an additional 36 policies have been created and are being finalized as we wait responses from Strauss estimate and will be in the manual update again anticipated for adoption in January for a total of 60 policies. There are 10 mandated policies from the most recent alert 221 left for the new policy committee to address in the upcoming year. Five regulations have been formally reviewed in 2020 and there are 36 more that the administration is finalizing as a part of the manual update per a total of 41 regulations. There are four mandated regulations from the most recent alert 221 to address in the upcoming year as we wouldn't want the new policy committee to get bored or anything like that. I would like to thank the policy committee board members, the alternates, Dr. T, Kim Willer in central office for their time, effort, dedication, and commitment to updating the policy manual as well as thank Mrs. DeCarlo, Mr. Higgins, Ms. West, Mr. Ginella, any other administrators or staff who provided their expertise along with the nurses and the RTA who've also been providing input as they insist us in this endeavor while also simultaneously problem solving through a global pandemic. So we eagerly anticipate starting 2021 with the policy manual up to compliance.
I'm exhausted just hearing that. There's extensive amount of work that the policy committee has done this year, getting our manual, moving it towards an updated status and all of the people that collaborated in order to make that happen. It's quite extensive. So thank you to the policy committee for taking care of that.
Larissa, when do you foresee getting that updated policy manual to board members to review? Cause that's a hefty read.
It is. So we would like to get it to you. My hope is before the break, we're waiting on some answers from Strauss estimate. And those answers may affect some of the language that's there. However, I would totally be in favor of sharing it a little early and just noting some of the language that might be getting changed. But our thought was at least two weeks, if not longer, for you to have this document shared with you because we don't want you to feel rushed and not have the opportunity. The full document with the way that Strauss estimate put it together is in the shared policy drive that was dropped in there in the summer, but there are additional edits, additions to it and some language changes as well. So we definitely want to get that to all of you as soon as we can.
Are those, um, those edits, is that tailored to local programs and, and like our, what our priorities are as a board? Like, cause I know that Strauss estimate has like stock and then we have to tailor it to specifics and choose certain pieces?
Correct. We've also, I've been going through policies and identifying if new programs need to be created, new positions. There are a lot of changes in some of the policies. So just making sure that we're as board members all aware of that and then the administration is aware of the changes as well, so that everything can be executed.
So we will be receiving a complete final document?
Yes.
And it's roughly 101 items to review?
Yes.
And we're going to be approving it all as one blanket?
Yes.
Just personally, I'm going to need more than two weeks.
Okay.
Uh, since this is our last meeting of the year, I just wanted to take a moment and thank Mrs. Brooks and Mrs. Smith. And I guess Mrs. Hjellborg for being for being great chairs of your committees. I really appreciated how thorough your reports are. Well, I mean, Tanya, we only met twice, but yeah, you too. You're awesome. You're awesome too. I just wanted to say thank you. It's been very professionally done. I really appreciate how much work has gone into this. Just wanted to say thank you to you all and including Tanya.
Is there any further questions for policy? Or comments? Okay. If not, I have my education committee meeting to, to review. We met on December 9th that from four to, four to five. Myself, Mrs. Mezic, Mrs. Smith, Mr. Higgins, and Dr. Ternavian met and Mr. Higgins previewed us on many of the things that he mentioned in his report, such as the benchmarks and the report cards. Also giving us an overview of what's happening with our OID schedule and any kind of additional supports that, and tools that we're offering for the teachers to use virtually and in a hybrid situation. He also talked about the PD in December regarding writer's workshop, Raz Kids. And I believe that there was an in-service also up in KDM. Forgive me, I forgot what that, Mr. Higgins, what was the key, the in-service on the ninth?
It was using Google tools and Google meets for staff assistance.
Thank you. I don't know why I have a blank right there next to it. I apologize. Also, he talked about the workshop model being infused into Copeland. That's a, a model of instruction, highly allows for high different differentiation. And I'm looking forward to hearing about that as it evolves. And he talked about the PD that our staff is doing, which I love this piece because PD can be sometimes a bear and it's in a virtual game model and the staff compete with each other with it. And I, I think it's a really cool innovative way for our, our staff to keep their, their skills sharp and in a fun way. And whether it be your traditional like check off the box kind of things that the state's telling you have to do. You know, this is a nice way to kind of make it a little bit more fun, but then there's also a lot of other PD that's, you know, very exciting too. And learning the new methods of teaching and with differentiation. So I really appreciate that as an educator myself. We also talked about the curriculum projects. Music update that should be moving along shortly. Our instructional council has adopted a new template to utilize. So they should be almost done with that and we should see that relatively soon. And one of the things that we did talk about also was alternate ways to work with our kids in this environment and making sure that we could reach the needs of all of, all of our kids. And we were talking about like Title I funds and repurposing. I think that's still an idea in development, but it's, we're looking at the whole picture here to help our kids stay on track in this hybrid virtual world we're in. So thank you, Mr. Higgins, for all the work and the attention towards this. It's been a pleasure working with you as always. From one educator to another, I really appreciate it. And I'm looking forward to seeing what we do in 2020. But I just hope it's a little bit, you know, not as exciting as everything that's been going on in 2020, 2021. I'm just hoping a little bit more boring, but you know, still fun. Appreciated. So if there's any question?
I have report as the chair of the negotiations committee. The RTA has reached out to us to begin the negotiation process in January of 2021. And I, we will keep you posted.
Sounds good. Okay.
I actually also have a sentiment as a council liaison. The township council, Mayor Mike wishes everyone a The township council, Mayor Mike wishes everyone a happy holiday, a safe holiday, stay safe out in the weather tomorrow. And he just also wanted to thank the school district for working so wonderfully with the municipal.
Okay. All right, now we will continue to work through the agenda. Where are we at? Okay. Onto recommendations for board action. We have personnel. And we have twenty five items and they start on page four and go all the way to page six. May I please have a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendations?
All moved.
Mrs. Corolaru and I believe that was Mr. Thomasini. Quite extensive goes all the way to page six. Since this is personnel, there is no discussion. And Mrs. DeCarlo, when you're ready, can we please have a roll call?
Yes, Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mrs. Cordalaru?
Yes.
Mrs. Mezak?
Yes.
Mrs. Shields?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Thomasini?
Yes.
Mrs. Hellbord?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is H I B. We have two unconfirmed cases. May I have a motion to approve the H I B resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Thomasini and Mrs. Corolaru. And we, like I said, we have two unconfirmed cases. Can I have a roll call to accept the superintendent's recommendations?
Mrs. Brooks? Mrs. Cordalaru?
Yes.
Mrs. Mezak?
Yes.
Mrs. Shields?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Thomasini?
Yes.
Mrs. Hellbord?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Doctor Tanami, can I just confirm that we don't have any, any, any open cases?
I can confirm there are no open cases right now.
Thank you very much. Okay, next on the agenda, we have education and we only have, we have three pieces. Can I please have a motion to approve the education recommendation?
All moved.
All right. Is there any discussion? Okay. If not, may I please have a roll call, Mrs. DeCarlo?
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mrs. Cordalaru?
Yes.
Mrs. Mezak?
Yes.
Mrs. Shields?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Thomasini?
Yes.
Mrs. Hellbord?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Next on the agenda is special education. We have two items. Can I have a motion to approve the special ed recommendations?
I wish to approve the special ed recommendations one and two.
Thank you, Mrs. Mezak. Have a second, Mrs. Brooks? Any, any discussion? Okay. Um, Mrs., please have a roll call on special education.
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mrs. Cordalaru?
Yes.
Mrs. Mezak?
Yes.
Mrs. Shields?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Sorry, yes.
Mr. Thomasini?
Yes.
Mrs. Hellbord?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next section of our agenda is administration. And we have four items. May I please have a motion to approve the administration recommendations?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, in this section, we have. School bus evacuation drills, a donation, our school calendar is also here for the following year. And we also have a dedication. So I guess with this, the cat will be out of the bag for the dedication because it is officially on the. On the agenda and posted. We have a. I believe it, Mrs. Corolaru, do you want to mention what, what is the, the piece?
The P T A of the Dwyer Elementary School had requested. To dedicate the playground to Mr. McGovern in honor of his dedicated service to the students and families of the Dwyer community. As well as his service to the country and the U S military and his ongoing service to the Rockaway Township as a firefighter. And that's it.
Thank you so much. Well, I'm looking forward to seeing that. Congratulations, Mr. McGovern. Can I please have a roll call to?
I'd like to make a comment on number two.
Sure, sure.
Oh, again, just a great way to have community outreach. The Dover Home Depot donated that refrigerator to the life skills program at K D M and that's really awesome. So. Go shop Dover Home Depot.
Always. Is there anything else? I'm sorry. I didn't mean to cut anybody off. Okay, can I please have a roll call for administration items?
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mrs. Cordalaru?
Yes.
Mrs. Mezak?
Yes.
Mrs. Shields?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Thomasini?
Yes.
Mrs. Hellbord?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, next, next on the agenda is finance on page nine and it goes through seven items. In that section, may I please have a motion to approve the recommendation, the finance?
So moved.
Mrs. Shields? Mrs. Cordalaru? Any discussion? Just want to thank Mrs. Shields and Mrs. Brooks for going every month and making sure that our bills are taken care of. It's greatly appreciated. Every month without failure, show up and take care of business. Thank you.
Don't thank us, that business office, those ladies do all the work. We just sign them.
Okay, is there any further discussion in that area? If not, can I please have a roll call on finance?
Mrs. Brooks? Mrs. Cordalaru?
Yes.
Mrs. Mezak?
Yes.
Mrs. Shields?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Thomasini?
Yes.
Mrs. Hellbord?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Our next section is policy. We have. Three for a second read. May I have a motion to approve the policy recommendations?
Second.
Mr. Thomasini, thank you. Any discussion comments for policy?
I would just like to bring to your attention, there was a suggestion at the last meeting to edit one of the bullets on the first page. To read for parents and guardians to continue to be informed of their child's skill development. So that change was applied.
Thank you. If there is no further discussion, can I have a roll call on policy?
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mrs. Cordalaru?
Yes.
Mrs. Mezak?
Yes.
Mrs. Shields?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Thomasini?
Yes.
Mrs. Hellbord?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. This brings us to our old and new business section of our agenda. Does anyone have any older new business that they'd like to bring forward?
I just, mine's quick, mine's super quick. I just want to thank the R T A for on November nineteenth, they had the pizza kits. For the community and it was delicious. Like I really want to know where they got all the ingredients because it was so much fun and so good. So thank you very much.
Cool.
I just have a quick question. I don't know if it's for Dr. Tanami or Mrs. DeCarlo or Mr. Higgins, but. The fifth grade Chromebooks, have they been delivered yet? I had gotten a few questions on that.
They have not. We, they're not in house, well, actually, no, the Chromebooks themselves are in-house. They have not been distributed to the community yet. Because the, the, the cases that initially came with them are not the cases that we want to actually use. So we had to send those cases back. And we're waiting on the cases to be sent back. Once we have the proper cases, they'll be distributed and we feel optimistic that will happen in January. We actually have the Chromebooks in-house to store at Copland right now, but we're waiting on the proper cases.
Awesome. Thank you. And then I just have another note. Dr. Tanami and Mr. Higgins and Mrs. DeCarlo is always thanking everybody else and giving everyone so much credit for being cooperative and everything. And I just, I think it would be. You know, appropriate for us to really extend that thank you to you guys. Mrs. DeCarlo, Dr. Tanami and Mr. Higgins. B bars, Mrs. Waxman, Mrs. West, Mrs. Lewis, all the women in central office, the I T department, like. This really is something that could not have been done without everyone. So again, you're always thanking everyone else and I just want to make sure that you are publicly thanked, all of you. You are greatly appreciated. And just keep on keeping on.
Mrs. Brooks, thank you.
You know, it's been tough, but I feel like better days are ahead and that's to an awesome, awesome team, especially the principals as well.
Well, I just to quickly respond, very humbled and appreciative of your comments and I see the other board members as well. I couldn't be more thankful of our entire leadership team. And I see in your comments, you really acknowledged everyone there. And I see that as our, our six principals and our six central office leaders. By them working together over through this challenging times, I've been humbled by their. By the, the hard work, the ethic, the intellect, but also their ability to work together through conflict and problem solving ways. And so. It's one of the things I've been most proud of and candidly humbled by. So I appreciate you, you, you giving some voice to it this evening.
The people behind the curtain are easily forgotten and they are part of the huge list. So just again, thank you.
And I also wanted to piggyback on that. I just realized that I did not include B bars in the summary of policy and he was such an important part. In facilitating and also helping us with that. In addition, I attended the D B O P T A meeting on twelve fourteen and the question came up, Dr. T, as to when the next P T A president's council. Meeting will be and I'm wondering if you could. Speak to that.
Yeah, if I could respond, I'd like to commit to one in very nearly in the new year. You know, I, I'm pleased to report to the board and the community that I was able to provide a virtual Zoom. Sort of a community update to Rockaway Rotary today that went well. To be candid, I've been sort of hesitant to, to do community updates by Zoom because I'm so eager to do them in person, but. After today's update, I feel like I just need to commit to the virtual environment for the community updates in the new year. So. That will be one of my New Year's resolutions. I'll reach out and organize the P T A president's council again for a meeting in January. And even if we have to do it virtually, which we probably will, we'll do it virtually for the time being. And I'm just eager to get back to in-person meetings as quick as we can.
Thank you.
Sure.
You gave me the perfect segue since you mentioned your presentation with the Rotary to discuss. The board has discussed putting together an ad hoc committee. And we, community outreach where we're going, where the goal is to help support the superintendent. And working with the community in order to push out the strategic plan. So more, more will come in the new year after reorg. But I wanted everyone to know that we are putting it together in order to make sure everyone in the community, all the different pockets that make. Rockaway Township so unique and so great, make sure we get to all of those pieces and help Dr. T find them. Because it's a big place in Rockaway. All right. And that will be led by Mrs. Brooks and. In, in the January, in January, we will hear more after the reorg. Okay. Anybody else have anything else?
I just also have a quick note. Larissa reminded me. K D M, I just a huge shout out to Mrs. Wiznewski. She rolled out a mentor mentee program. With the fifth grade students and some of the special ed students primarily, they're, they're the little guys. And they had their first little virtual meeting yesterday. I know some of the kids are meeting their mentee with their teachers tomorrow. And again, it's just a, even in such a virtual setting, it's just a really, really nice program. And that the special ed teacher is, her name is escaping me and Patrick, I know you're going to come in and swoop in and save me. I know she was from Kinnon and had done it there. But it's just such an awesome, again, just another awesome program that even with the conditions we're in, they're just keeping on and the kids are excited. I know the fifth graders were picked for certain reasons and they're excited. So again, kudos to, to that team over.
I have one other comment. The other day I had to make a, I had to have contact with the health department to get my mother's meals on wheels moving and I had a wonderful conversation with Janet Hess, the nurse that. Has been working with us so closely. She could have not said much such wonderful things. About Rockaway Township and the partnership that our district has, has and has been working with the health department. She said she had so many wonderful things about to say about the administration, the teachers, the nurses and the staff, anybody that she's working with. She says, we're doing a phenomenal job. And it's, it's, it's a tough job and she couldn't have said more good things about that how everything's going in, in our schools. And how hard everybody's working to make this happen and keep these kids in school as much as possible. So I wanted to bring that, just highlight that and thank everyone for working with them and doing the very best job that they, everybody can do to keep, keep everyone safe.
And if I could, President Huber, if I could just echo those same sentiments back to the health department, it's really daily contact multiple times a day candidly with Janet, our nurses. And she is so thorough and so responsive that that partnership has been. So critical to our successful reopening and it will be remain critical going forward into twenty one. And so Janet, to her team of nurses and to Peter Tabit. We also share a great sense of gratitude and appreciation for your partnership. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, um, that brings us, if we have nothing else with newer, old business, that brings us to the second open public. Comment section. Can I ask if, can I have a motion to open to the public?
So moved.
Second.
Show hands. Okay, is there anyone left in the, the waiting room to speak with us?
No, there is not currently anyone in the waiting.
Okay, so let it be noted that we have no one to speak for the second session. Can I please have a motion to close public?
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Smith? And Shields? I believe that was Mrs. Smith and then Mrs. Shields. And show of hands, please. Before I move on to the, the last piece of our, of our meeting, I just would like to say. Happy New Year to everyone and wishing everybody a happy and health, healthy new year and hoping twenty twenty one. Calms down a little bit and, and I'm, I have my fingers crossed and, and I believe that. We have learned so much in this past year and it's going, and there's so much we've learned in public education this year and by flipping everything. And going virtual that there's just so much we, yes, it was a tough year, but it was, but there was a lot of learning going on. And I, I have faith that good things are going to come to us in twenty twenty one. So happy new year, everyone. With that, I am going to ask for an adjournment. And we have to also go into closed session, but I'd like to adjourn the, the public session. Can I please have a motion?
You need a motion to go into executive, can't?
I apologize. I apologize.
Motion to go into executive.
Yes, my glasses, I can't read with this, with these glasses on too close. Can I, yes, can I have a motion to go in executive session? And thank you, I'm sorry.
One thing, Nancy, we have to say for the discussion of what?
Personnel.
And an estimated time as to how long we expect to be in executive session?
Approximately thirty minutes.
And no action will be taken?
And no action will be taken.
And we're not coming back out to public. We will have to come out to public to adjourn.
Yes. Absolutely. We haven't done this in a while.
It's understandable. That's what I'm here for.
I know. It's been so long since we've actually gone back into executive. I appreciate it. Okay. For those that are joining me in executive, I will see you there in a few minutes and for everyone else, enjoy your night.
Have a happy, healthy, safe holiday.
Thank you.
Gotcha, thank you. Can we have a, can I have a motion to adjourn closed session?
So moved.
At 9:13 PM. Who was the first on that?
Me.
Lisa Mezak? Second?
Tanya.
Thank you. Okay, can I have a motion to adjourn please?
So moved.
Second.
Toni Shields and Christy Carollo. And let it be noted at 9:14. I'll send this over to. Show of hands. Thank you. Okay.
I think it's very snowy.